Bring this meeting to order. Please stand.
Clocks behind.
Clocks behind, sorry. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for being so loud. That's great to hear. If we could ask Clerk Jay Reedsmann to call the roll, please.
Trustee Pearson.
President.
Trustee Vance.
Here.
Treasurer Dilley.
Here.
Supervisor Kramer.
President.
Clerk Reedsmann here.
Any board member conflicts of interest?
None.
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 Okay, we're here for a public hearing?
None.
For the Navinoy Trail Special Assessment. If you have a comment, please come up to the microphone and give us your name and your property address and put it on the record. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Couldn't you press a button here?
Yes, sir. Hold it down and it'll come on.
All right, thank you. My name is Mark Hoffman. I'm the owner of 3342 Navinoy Trail.
I'm sorry, thirty?
Thirty-three, forty-two.
Okay. Yeah, I got your letter, yes.
Pardon?
I got your letter.
Oh, you did? Okay, I didn't see it in the...
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Okay.
We put it in the packet at the last minute so everyone has it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to then voice my protest
No, that's great.
for that particular SAD. And that's it.
Okay, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on Navinoy Trail? Going once, going twice, going three times, public comment is closed. Thank you very much. Consent agenda. I do want to take out one set of bills out of the bills report called Enterprise Fund Transaction. It's still on the agenda, but I want to discuss it and move it to 8D.
D?
D. D-Deltan. Is there a...
I would like to make a change to the consent agenda as well.
Yes.
I would like to move the airport lease transfer.
Okay.
And I'm gonna say that's new business, so 9B.
9B Airport. Any other changes?
Yes, I'd like to move the... Cut three bills out of the consent agenda.
I did that.
Did that, but what I had...
It's 1D. 8D.
8D, okay.
Yeah. I did that. Same three bills, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any others? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Excuse me. Public comment on consent agenda?
Oh, yeah. Hey, thank you very much. You're absolutely correct. Thank you. Thank you for catching that.
Hello, my name is Patrick McGinnis. I request that the document on page 40 of the consent agenda be removed and discussed during the regular board meeting. The reason for this request is that under expenditures changed to line item repairs, maintenance, land and building, and an added $2,000 for grass seed. A $2,000 expense for grass seed seems like a lot of grass seed, unless the grass seed is going to be used to try to cover up the devastation of the forest at the airport. Either way, I think that this should be discussed during regular meeting so that all the members of the community can understand why the township felt they had a need to spend $2,000 on grass seed. After all, this board did promise us more transparency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments on agenda items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Old business. Okay, Navinoy Trail. In your packet, you have Special Assessment Resolution Number 6. Before I read it, does anyone make a motion in regards to that resolution? Or would you like me to read it first?
Read it first.
Okay. Minutes of a regular meeting in the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, May 14, 2024, 7:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time. Members present in absence. The following preamble and resolution were offered by members such and such and supported by members such and such. Whereas the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, after doing legal notice, has reviewed and amended Special Assessment role prepared for the purpose of to frame the cost of certain improvements as described in Exhibit A. Attached here to and made a part hereof. And whereas the Township Board deemed said amended Special Assessment role to be fair and equitable as reported to it by the supervisor. Now therefore, be it resolved that said amended Special Assessment role shall be designated 2024 Navinoy Trail Special Assessment Role. Amended the role and the district against which it is spread shall be designated 2024 Navinoy Trail Special Assessment District. The Township Board hereby finds that the allocation of cost of the parcels comprising the role are fair, just, equal, and in proportion to the benefits conferred and the methodology employed in making such allocation is incorporated herein by reference and approved. The Township Board further finds that the anticipated increase in the value of the property resulting from the improvements described in Exhibit A attached hereto is proportional to the cost of said improvements. The role is in the amount of $42,374, as prepared and reported to the Township Board by the supervisor. Being the same hereby is confirmed. The role shall be levied in one annual installment due on December 1, 2024, and said installment of the role shall bear no interest. The assessment made in the role are hereby ordered and directed to be collected, and the Township Clerk shall deliver the role to the Township Treasurer with the Township Clerk's warrant attached commanding the Treasurer to collect the assessment therein in accordance with the direction of the Township Board with respect thereto, and the Treasurer is directed to collect amounts assessed as the same become due. All resolutions and part resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution shall be and the same hereby are rescinded. That's the resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Resolution Number 6 as read by the supervisor.
Support.
Jay makes it. Jan supports discussion. This is at eight... Just to let you know, we had four objections from backlotters. There are 66 backlotters, I believe, and 10 front lot owners. The entire cost of the project came in with the legal fees at $80,000. The road commissions providing 25, we're providing approximately 17, and the assessment will be 42. And hopefully, we'll see that done as soon as possible if we decide to move forward. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to point out that because we are self-financing that, there's no interest rates and there is no SAD cost going out to our legal counsel to create this, which would have cost another $6,000 or $7,000. We're trying to save the people as much money as possible. We have, like Bob said, we have a contribution from the road commission of $25,000 towards this road. It's not a big piece of road, but it's heavily used. The dust is just horrendous. And you can't keep up with the potholes because it's so used by the boat trailers and stuff going to the boat launch. We've had a lot of complaints about that through the years with the dust. And we try to keep the dust down as much as we can with brining, but that costs money too. And it's getting more and more expensive. So I'm just saying that we've done the best we can to try to keep this as reasonable as much. We projected as a township that we would contribute $6,000 towards this. We tripled the amount of money we're putting into it. So we're taking the biggest bite. If I'm not mistaken, the people that's on the part that's being paid, the front lotters, we call them, the assessment's $1,000, the back lotter's 500. You're not gonna get it any cheaper, ever. Just letting you know. So that's all I got to say.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk will take the roll, please.
Jan... Treasurer Jan Dilley.
Yes.
And Supervisor Kramer.
Yes.
Trustee Vance.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
And Clerk Reedsmann, yes. That's five yays and no nays.
Thank you. The motion is declared adopted. So let's move on to Sewer Expansion Phase 1 Special Assessment District Resolution. In your packet, I just provided you the information from both USDA and the engineer. It's all online, actually, under Sewer Expansion Info. And I will read the resolution if you all concur. Special Assessment Resolution Number 3, Residential Sewer Phase 1 Special Assessment District. Minutes of a regular meeting in the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, held on May 14, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time. With members present in absence, the following preamble and resolution were offered by a member blank and supported by a member blank. Whereas the Township Board of the Township of Tuscorra County of Sheboygan, State of Michigan, by resolution, determined to acquire and construct the public improvements described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part hereof and assess the cost thereof to the property benefited by said improvements, all in accordance with Act 188 Public Acts of Michigan, 1954 is amended. And whereas the supervisor has prepared and reported to the Township Board a Special Assessment role assessing part of the cost of said improvement to the property benefiting thereby with the supervisor's certificate attached thereto. And whereas the Township Board desires to set the date for a public hearing to review the Special Assessment role and hear objections thereto. Now therefore, be it resolved that said Special Assessment shall be filed with the office of the Township Clerk and shall be available for public examination during regular working hours and regular working days of the township. The Township Board shall meet at the Township Hall on June 4, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time, at which time and place the Township Board shall review said Special Assessment role and hear any objections thereto. The Township Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of such hearing to be published twice prior to said hearing in the Sheboygan Tribune, a newspaper of general circulation in the township. The first publication to be at least 10 days prior to the first hearing and shall cause notice of said hearing to be mailed by first-class mail to all record owners or persons in interest in property in the Special Assessment District as shown on the last Township tax assessment records of the township at least 10 full days before the hearing. Said notice shall be in substantially the form attached. All resolutions and part of the resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same hereby are rescinded. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Special Assessment Resolution Number 3 for the Sewer Phase 1 District.
I'll second that.
Jan, it's second discussion. Let me just say that if we pass this, we're going down quite a road that members of this community and township boards have been... This township board and previous township boards have worked on for pretty near a decade, I would say. It's been a long time coming. It's not perfect. There are some issues. And I want to make sure that there's total understanding on the board of what we're getting into. So I've asked our engineer, Aaron Nordman. He's the principal of performance engineering. If you could step up. And he's been with us from the beginning on this process. And Aaron, if you could just take the board through what you did at the earlier meeting, starting at the beginning.
Yeah, thank you, Bob.
And board members. He's here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Yep. So as you know, we have two sewer projects that are broken into phases based on geographical locations, the south and the north, essentially Phase 1 and Phase 2. We went out to bid on three separate contracts for the Phase 1 project, which included a low-pressure sewer collection system contract that involves a lot of directional drill pipe. That's a little bit of a specialty item. So it was separated out from a traditional gravity sewer collection system contract, which is mainly the neighborhoods here that we have regular 8-inch pipe and manholes like you think of a typical sewer system. So there's two collection system contracts. And then there was a contract bid out for the wastewater treatment plant expansion that covered the capacity for Phase 1 and Phase 2. These were pooled together because of the economy of scale of doing this project in one piece, especially when you throw in the money that came from Eagle for the equalization tank, which is also integrated into that contract work. So these three projects went out to bid. We received bids on March 28. The two collection system contracts came in basically in accordance with the estimates. The wastewater treatment plant was significantly over budget, and there was only one bidder. So we began a process. We informed the USDA...
Just a minute, Aaron. I'll get you into my phone.
Okay.
Here, just trade me for now. Battery's dying. Go ahead. Thank you, sir.
So we informed the funding agencies of the situation and got their permission to negotiate with the low bidder. So we met here with Bob and Jan and the contractor. And we began a process of trying to value-engineer things, options that they saw that might save a few dollars, and scope reduction. And ultimately, we came to a price that allowed the project to move forward with the funding allocations that were already in place. Part of this process involved a clear delineation within the wastewater plant over what is Phase 2 and what is Phase 1. We tried to kind of lump all this together and say it would all be subject to the prevailing wage and Buy America, Pay America Act stuff that comes with the federal funding. Unfortunately, that was part of our cost issue. So having resolved that, we have a pretty good number for the collection system work that will be duplicated in the Phase 2 area. That work is out to bid right now. Bids are due back on that June 6. So on June 6, we'll essentially know the total package for all of this work. The cost issues are mainly related to Phase 1 because Phase 2 actually had a full funding obligation from USDA in loan only. So there's 5.5-some million dollars allocated...
5.65.
Yep, in loan money from USDA. And after that, you guys received an earmark of 3.5 million. So there's really not much chance that there's not enough money in the Phase 2 funding to run into a problem with having enough. Now, would you decide the cost is not appropriate? That's up to you guys. But it's not the same issue where we did not have enough actual funding allocated. So part of making Phase 1 go is the township has already spent approximately $266,000 on Phase 1 work. The process going through the Special Assessment, budgeting with the funding agencies, they require a contingency, which is money in addition to what the contract values are to cover cost overruns for unforeseen conditions. What we've proposed is applying that $266,000 that the township has already paid as the contingency on it. So what that means is that if everything came in on budget or under, the township would be reimbursed all the $266 they've already spent on it. If you use half of it, you would only get reimbursed half. If all the contingency got spent, you wouldn't get reimbursed any of it. So the process that you would have to go to to replenish these sewer funds is you'd have to then say, okay, we spent, say, the $266. You'd have to say, all right, well, we want to put this back into our sewer fund reserves over the next five years or 10 years or wherever you decide the timeline is. And you'd have to recover that through rates and charges and sewer bills to replenish your sewer fund.
And we've confirmed all this with our bond counsel, right?
Yep. Your financial advisor, your bond counsel...
Right. We are on the phone.
And the USDA.
And the USDA.
Yeah, everybody's aware of the plan. And everybody... I mean, the USDA's opinion is that, well, you had too much in reserve. You should be... You know, you know how all that went down. But you guys need to keep a reserve. You have a lot of infrastructure. So it's wise to, as this moves forward, see how it shakes out and make sure you have enough money to come back and reserve. The other positive side of this is that because there is sufficient money allocated in the Phase 2, EPA and USDA have already said that they agree that anything that's related to the plant, you could push contingency money from their pot into that. So there's extra funding available there that could potentially cover some cost overrun that needed to happen during the course of the project.
Now, I wanted to let the board know that for Phase 1, we have two sources of funding. We have the USDA granting loan, and we have the EGLE $1.86 million grant, of which I think we spent $150,000 or so on the emergency generator. The purpose of that grant was threefold. A surge tank for seasonality and future expansion. It would really come in handy for Phase 3 at some point. You could explain that in a minute. And also to do hookups for individual homeowners. And the third being cost overruns. Because of the high expense of the plant, we will be using all... Would somebody kill... Please, please kill that fly. So in any event... It's a Chinese book. If it was normal times, we would have been able to do all that. We budgeted it out. But because of the high expense, we will not be using any of that money for putting in individual hookups in homes. It'll all be used for the plant cost overruns and the surge tank. Now, could you explain to the board exactly what a surge tank is, what it does, and what it could be used for in the future?
Yeah, so you'll hear it referred to as a surge tank, a sideline surge or an equalization tank. Essentially, what this is, is if you picture the footprint of the tanks at your plant right now, if you've seen them, we're essentially doubling that in Phase 1 and Phase 2. So we've got a mirrored set of tanks that are just like that. And in between these two sets of tanks, we've got the surge tank, which is 150,000 gallons. What the surge tank does is in the summer, when you're at your peak flow, the tourist season is hot and everybody's here camping and doing all things in Indian River, the flows come into the plant. And if the plant can't process the high volume of wastewater, it'll spill off excess flow into this tank. And what it does is it maintains compliance with your discharge limits that you're discharging groundwater in the rapid infiltration basis. So let's say from Thursday through Sunday, you're receiving that tank fills and it fills a quarter of the way full. Well, then Monday, Tuesday come, your flows go back down. They pump that back into the plant. It finishes processing and it goes out. So it's not raw sewage in this tank. It's essentially treated wastewater in there that's just being stored.
Partially treated.
Partially treated wastewater, yes.
So could you explain the bug process? Like, you know, sewage for dummies?
Yes, so...
You know, why is the surge tank so awesome? Because of the bugs?
Well, there's two things that make this tank awesome. One is the bugs, right? The bugs... Wastewater breaks down based on a biological process of nitrification, denitrification, and then some of the other constituents that are in there. But essentially, what's happening is you need enough oxygen But essentially what's happening is you need enough oxygen and a cycle of oxygenated wastewater and then low oxygen environment, and then back to oxygenated, to process and break down the wastewater. Different systems have different ways of doing all of this. You've gone with a process developed by Aeromod that was put in place with the original plant. Your current operator has that dialed in, you've been meeting your limits on it and it works well. That's why we went with that same modular type of system in this phase. This equalization tank allows you to maintain a steady flow versus all this up and down that the biological activity can get disrupted with. So when we take the wastewater in and out of that process, you help level out what's going on through your clarifiers and out to discharge. The other thing about this, the footprint of this tankage, is it's also mirrored to, if you go to a Phase Three, you could also put the partition walls in and make this another processing unit. So none of this, even though it's an equalization tank today, it's set up for your future. If you want to go to a Phase Three and add extra treatment capacity, you could do that as well.
But if I understand it from what you told me before, and Tammy told me before, there's these peak flows between like eight in the morning and 10.
Yeah, diurnal.
And then four to nine in the evening. And this makes it all flowing at the same rate, so it becomes more efficient, is that correct?
That's correct. That's what we're trying to achieve, is taking a lot of those peaks out, just balance and flow.
Okay, now, one of the things I wanted to make sure the board understands is that just like Nabinoy, our counsel, our bond counsel, Mr. Steve Mann, has told us that we cannot assess the township. So we can make a contribution, but we can't assess. We can pay the OMA, so, our ONM, so in regards to the Devo Beach bathrooms, even though we're going to hook up, we can't assess ourselves, but we can pay the ONM. But we can make a contribution if the board so desires at some point for some of those costs. And that might be something you might want to consider down the road if we go over the contingency. Does that make sense? Did I say that right? You're the expert.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's correct. Excuse me. The original budgeting, I believe, had like six REUs allocated to the township. And at the end of the day, those six came out. And, you know, essentially, you lost $120,000 of planned revenue, you know, if you used the original, the original numbers we were budgeting with back then. So that did come out, and that's just, you know, the cost didn't come out, just your contribution came out.
And I also wanted to let the board know that last week, 10 days ago, EPA opened up for application for 2024 congressional earmark for a million dollars. We have a request in to USDA to use that money for these projects. Because after discussing it with them at least three times, that I recall, unlike USDA that says, oh, Phase One is a separate project, Phase Two is a separate, they don't look at it that way. They look at one wastewater project. They've told us that. So they're looking at ways to allow us to use some of that $1 million for this whole process at the plant, only the plant. Now, I don't think we should be using it for the collection system, but if we use it at the plant, it's going to help with those costs. It's going to set the future for any Phase Three. It's going to help with capacity. And as I said in the earlier meeting, I don't know if you're aware or not, but we have a mechanical screener. Could you describe that? What is a screener? A $200,000 screener?
A $200,000 screen looks a lot like an auger. So what it is, is it's got, the wastewater comes in through a pipe below ground, and it comes up into this, it's called a flume, that kind of channelizes it into the, what we call the headworks, which is the start of the whole plant process. This headworks has a screen that's an auger that goes down into the channel. The auger has these bristles on it. The idea is that the screen, the auger turns, and it lifts the solids, all the non-biodegradable material, out of the wastewater screen.
T-shirts, rags.
T-shirts, rags, all kinds of stuff, yeah. And it goes up the auger, goes into this little compactor, gets pressed, the liquid comes back out of it, and then it goes for disposal, solids go for disposal. This screen has had issues, in my understanding, from day one, and the operators struggled to the point where they've had overflows in the floor out there and.
But now it's basically nonoperational.
Yeah, in the last few months, at some point, the shaft of it broke. So it's actually laying outside the building now, and your operator has to manually go over to the bypass to this is a bar rack that has bars that physically prevent the solids from going through. And they have to manually scrape, collect that material, and bag it on their own.
Well, that's a smelly job.
So you can imagine, this is not a fun job. They would, I'm sure, appreciate having the screen repaired.
So we need that replaced. And it's, talking with USDA, we could use part of that $1 million for that. The other idea down the road, and, you know, we're not going to cite any of this here, but could you talk about the storage and some of the shortcuts we made, and how we could make up with it with this million?
Yeah, so that's, that's actually important. Part of our scope reduction was, we had a screen, you know, we had kind of the wish list of things in here that were your contractor wanted at the plant. So we had the screen in here, with all the cost overruns, the screen came out. We had a building addition, that came out. So that addition was to create two things. One was allowing them to change the way they're doing their chemical feed into the plant, both in terms of storage and the injection point. And the other was actual, just physical storage, where right now, they're storing stuff in your boiler room, and if you bend in there, it's cramped. They, they need storage for pumps and equipment and spares and.
And it shouldn't even be in there.
It should not really be in there.
Those chemicals should not be in there.
Well, the chemicals are not in the boiler room, but we were trying to create this space for them, yeah. And as your plant gets bigger, the need for that space will be more, you know? And they'll go through more chemicals, they're either going to have to, like today, manually handle these drums and move them. Or the plan was basically create a new access point where it could get delivered to it, and they wouldn't have to manually haul the drums out.
Because if we're going to increase, if we're going to increase by. 500 REUs, that's a lot of chemical storage.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, you're doubling, your plant, you're doubling, you're a couple of years.
No. So we could either add on to the building, or we could add a separate, nice heated pole barn, and we could store our generators and our pumps.
Yes.
Because we're going to need more pumps. And, and board, I have to tell you that, as you've seen by all the capital improvements, we've had to improve at the last minute for sewers. With this aging plant, we have gone through, as you know, painfully know, we've gone through a lot of pump repair, a lot of new pumps. And that means with this additional system especially, how many pumps in Phase One and Two? Off the top of your head?
I think there's about 30 in Phase One and 40-ish in Phase Two.
So that's more than quadruple what we got now?
All right now, you have nine.
Oh, so that's a lot.
But there's duplexes.
So, you know, we need room for, you know, quite, quite a few spares on this. Janet, you've been involved with this, is there anything you want to add for the board's knowledge?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, getting back to this $1 million extra earmark that we recently received from Congress, the original application said that it was for the original plant repairs and upgrades. And we're requesting the EPA to change it to help with the construction, because that's exactly what we're doing. We're repairing and upgrading by adding on to the sewer. So I, I'm not making any promises, but it looks promising that we, they will allow us to use it in the construction phase, which it wasn't originally mentioned in our application. So we're going to have to reapply and explain to them what we need to do. But it sounded like they didn't have major issues, let's put it that way, with switching it over to the construction part. So we're hoping, and that would take care of the contingency thing big time. The other thing is, I want, the board already pretty much knows this, but I want everybody to know that we have been working nonstop on this sewer project, probably for, hold on, Bob, four years? Four years as township officials.
As to the previous project.
And then even before that, Bob was working on that. We have gone to Washington DC, Lansing, Alpena, Traverse City. And we have been all over looking for grants, loans, earmarks, whatever we can find from this project. When the USDA looked at this project, they could not believe how much outside funding that we were able to get. They said, nobody gets this much funding, but we did it. When we started this project, everybody said, it's going to be unaffordable. We need it, but it's not going to be affordable. And we're on target of having it come in per REU, what we wanted to before COVID, before inflation, before all that. And we're still on target. We've had to do a lot of work, Aaron has helped us a lot. But we have spent hours and hours working on this project. We have tried to be as transparent as possible. We've had a monthly sewer meeting, just about every month. If there was nothing new, we might skip a month or two. But we've had monthly sewer meetings as informational meetings only, to make sure the public was involved, they knew what was going on. Aaron has attended a lot of those meetings to explain what's going on and be involved. We've gone way out trying to be as transparent as possible. This has not been an easy project for Aaron. Thank you so much for helping us get through the quagmire on this whole thing, because it's been tricky. A project this big, when you're talking between 14 and 16 million dollars, it's not easy to put together. And we've had to break it up. So we've had three different projects that we've had to bid out on, which we, originally, we wanted to do it only one way, and they've made us break it up into three, which made it more complicated. That's why if Phase Two goes through, their assessment will be slightly different than Phase One, because the funding for that particular project is different than the funding for the other project. So we have to work within the funding available that we have. The USDA is not willing to fund the same project as the EPA. They have their own little rules. And so we have to deal with the funding for that. The funding for the plant, I think we're going to be able to work that out. But because we have EPA money and USDA money and Eagle money, EPA money, which is the congressional Washington DC money, they require prevailing wage. The others do not. So therefore, that's made that very difficult. And we've been working through that, and that's going to be still tricky to move through. But I think if this million dollars is allowed to transfer over there, it will solve a lot of problems. And I just want to thank the community for sticking with this. It's been sailing about seven years altogether.
It's been like a lifetime.
And so CHIRP's been involved, which is the citizen community that spearheaded this. And then it got turned over to the Township Board to take over.
And BLPA.
Four, four years ago, and we've been working on it ever since. I'm just a trustee, I'm not supposed to have all this much work. But I have put in 20, 30, 40 hours a week on this for a long time. I've learned a lot about sewers, more than I wanted to know. And I've learned a lot about funding, more than I wanted to know. But we are at the cusp of a lot of years of hard work. And I just want to thank everybody for where we are. And however the board votes is where we go, but it ain't going to get no better, let's put it that way. The funding is drying up in Washington DC, the funding is drying up in the state. So we're very lucky to get what we got, the promises that we have, so.
We should also thank BLPA and tip of the Mint Watershed Council.
Yeah, absolutely.
Who helped us early on. The public may not be aware, but even Aaron has personally invested in this. He has waived a few hundred thousand dollars in fees of his own, just to get the price down.
Thank you.
So we really appreciate it. In regards to the cost share, every person sitting at this table, Chris Green and the office staff, work sewers every day.
Every day.
And it is not part of their statutory duties. They do it because they want to do it. So we don't have to go out and hire an additional project manager, et cetera, et cetera. And it's painful, as previous board members can tell you from the last go around, so.
One other thing I'd like to add, too. We've not had to pay grant writer, which is thousands and thousands of dollars, because Bob wrote all of them. So just letting you know, we have tried everything we can to save a thousand dollars here, a hundred dollars there, a million dollars there, wherever it is, we've tried to save it in this project. And thank you, Bob, for writing all those grants, because they're not easy to, to go through. And with the EPA and the state and USDA and all that, it's a difficult project. So normally, you would pay a grant writer a percentage, and we wouldn't be able to.
Or a congressional lobbyist.
Yeah, or a congressional, and as, oh, that reminds me, we did have a congressional lobbyist who went to Washington DC.
On our behalf.
And on our behalf, at no charge, at no charge. And we would not have received it, our EPA money, our congressional money, without her. And I want to thank her, too.
And him.
And him, exactly.
To him.
Yes. So we've been very fortunate to have, I don't know whose thing this is, but we've been very fortunate to have the people step up and help us. They'd save thousands and thousands of dollars if we had to do it on our own, so.
Is there any, is there any further questions for the engineer, or any comments from the board?
I've got a question. How long will it be before we know that this million dollars we can tap into it?
I'm sorry?
It's going to be 30 or 60 or 90 days. I mean, when are we going to know if we can tap into that money? If it's going to.
Regardless, we will be able to get the money, it's what we can use it for, so.
So I know, we know that.
I should hear by the end of the week whether they will allow us to use it for this project.
By the end of the week.
By the end of the week. If so, then it'll take me 30 to 60 days to get that.
Get the application together.
Application done. But it will still affect this project, even if it's disapproved, because they've made it clear that we could, we could build the extra building for the storage. We could build a place for the chemicals, because the overall title, the reason we got the money, it was called Tuscora Township Modernization and Expansion. So that's very, very broad. That's why we have a good chance. So I didn't want to start writing an application that takes a really long time and a lot of work, until I knew exactly what they would allow us to do. But I will get on that as soon as I get, get back next week. Aaron, anything else? Do you have anything else?
No, thank you, I appreciate all your time and everything you've done. Also, Kim.
Yes, sir. Aaron, I'm going to try to summarize what you just covered.
Okay.
So this is going to be a test. We've covered a lot of ground here, because we've been, we've talked about Phase One, Phase One cost, Phase One revenue, Phase Two, and repairs wishlist for $1 million. And that's kind of the high-level overview. Phase One, the costs you covered for gravity system, for low-pressure system, for the plant, expansion, which is a mirror image of what we have there today, is that correct?
Correct.
And then for the equalization tank, which would be the surge tank in between the two, or between the current system for treatment and the new system on the opposite side. And then we also covered repairs wishlist for $1 million, of which we should get some sort of list, in terms of what projects or what repairs or what buildings we want to have in there, just like a CIP list, so we can have a discussion on how that, once we know what, what we ought to do, this, we could review it with the authorities, but also so we know what we're asking to do. And I heard that we're asking for a building addition, a screener's replacement, and possibly some other things that I just wasn't able to summarize or write down at this point in time.
Most of that, that you just, oh, all of that that you just mentioned was stuff that we had to cut out to save money, correct?
That's correct.
So how many pumps do we have to have on hand then? I mean, right now, we've got nine pumps. How many backup pumps do we have right now? Two?
Two.
Two?
Two new and one rebuilt.
Two new.
Okay, okay. So what that means.
But that's because they're different sizes.
Okay.
Yeah, see, one thing we've done in this project, too, between Phase One and Phase Two, they all have the same pump.
Oh, that's how.
So you can keep the same two or three, it's still covered, you're not going to have 12 pumps go out at once.
Okay.
But eventually, eventually, we're going to need more generators, right? Portable generators.
Yes, you will.
Because of extended power outages.
Yes, I mean, some of this depends upon how mean Hunt operates during these outages and what their plan of attack is. The way I would typically see it for this size of lift station, the generator's in the back of a pickup, and they roll up, they hook to it, they pump it down, they unplug, they go to the next one. So nothing really stays at these lift stations, these pumps aren't that big.
Now, is this system that you've designed, that's, the operator will be able to get an unlarg ring?
Yes, they have remote.
So. So if I got a pump in my yard, I'm gone for a month. It goes out. Go get it out.
Now, that's different for the individual pumps than for the community pumps.
Okay. There's a difference. Okay. What's the difference?
So the individual pumps do not have the remote call-out stuff in them.
Okay.
The main collection system pumps have it.
And how do we know when an individual pump fails? The light goes out?
There's a light and an alarm, yes.
Okay. Okay. And that's where we're going to be driving around, looking for the lights?
Yes.
The operator?
Yes. Or people usually... Usually what happens, somebody's calling you, because the alarm's bothering them.
Right. I've heard the alarm beep for it.
Okay.
I have one on my street.
Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Any other question?
May I ask a question?
The vendor for the part of the plant that was over budget, have we dealt with that vendor before?
He built your original plant. For 1.5 million.
So I just want to ask one question for clarification. So the one million that we want to use is to cover the things we wish we could have done in the original sewer expansion. And do you have a list of what those things are that we can begin to understand better, so to speak?
Yeah, I think some of this would be a collaboration with your operator, just to make sure we get the models and the proper equipment that she likes.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah. The biggest part, though, would you agree, will be the screener and the expand...
Yes.
The expansion of the building.
Yes.
You said there have been issues with that screener from the beginning?
That's my understanding, yeah.
What's the... What is the lifespan of a good screener typically?
I mean, your screen can go twenty, thirty years, but it'll have, like a car, you know, it'll have parts within it that get repaired or replaced or that kind of stuff.
And certainly, if people didn't put things in the system that weren't meant to go in the system, that would help, too, yeah?
Yes. There's definitely a factor of use, yeah.
Public education.
Now, Aaron, the reason why we have not replaced that screener yet is because we... If these two phases do go online, we're going to need a bigger one anyway. So we've been holding off. Am I correct on that? So we can get the bigger one in there as an upgrade?
Yes. The wastewater plant expansion had a higher flow rate screener in it. The why it didn't get replaced really comes back to the fact that the operator was never convinced that the screen worked properly and advised against spending money on it to still have a problem. So that's a little... It's not clear to just say, oh, yeah, we did it for the upgrade, but there's a combination of factors, yeah.
Right, exactly. But if we would have replaced that back then, we'd still have to be getting a bigger one now.
Well, it wouldn't make sense to do anything but get a bigger one.
Right.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Right. But, yes, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
So it's okay with this board, what I'll do is after I hear from the EPA, one way or another, I'll gather up all the alternatives. I'll consult with... Janet and I will consult with the engineer and our bond counsel, and then again with the EPA, to develop that list that Jay just mentioned.
Yeah. We'll have to talk to Tammy about that to get the priority list.
Yes, yeah.
So the person... The person... The company that installed the screen initially, are they working on the expansion?
Yeah. The bidder and the contractor were proposing award to the plant expansion is the same contractor that built the original plant. Grand Traverse Construction.
But he's not the manufacturer.
No. The screen was designed and supplied, you know, they just installed it.
One more question, bud.
Yes, sir.
So the motion's all about Phase One construction costs. And in the handouts that you had, you did go through what the REUs were, but we didn't discuss that at all, sir.
The... There's two hundred and four. He had it in your packet, I think. It's two hundred and four REUs.
Yep.
At the individual cost of...
Eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents per RU.
Okay. That's all part of this...
This resolution.
Resolution and motion on the table, right?
Yeah. The resolution is simply to set the assessment rule at that price and schedule a public hearing and move it forward for the next... For our next decision.
Right.
So even if we pass this tonight, doesn't mean that we have to proceed.
Right. But all this information will be available to the public for public viewing and examination and discussion, if they care to.
Right. It'll be in a file in the office. You can come in any workday between nine and four. And it's already on the website. So you just go to the top of the website where it says sewer information, click on it. Everything that's in this packet, except for the resolution, is already in there. Plus, all the drawings for your individual homes are in there. So if you want to go in and see where he predicted a drop, like when he first did it, he put it right in the middle of my driveway. So I got even to move it over a little bit now, so. He'll be doing that a lot. Anything else?
Thank you, Aaron.
All right. Thank you.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Roll call. Treasurer Delhae. Supervisor Kramer. Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Vance.
On behalf of many hours of working, absolutely yes.
And Clerk Rees-Meier, yes. Yes.
The resolution is hereby adopted. We have another resolution.
And that's why I tried to summarize these different resolutions, because the resolution is next step around the cost, the total cost for this pressure, so.
So our next... I want to explain this for you. Read it. This is required by the USDA. It's a loan resolution by the board to allow indebtedness if we close. So you'll see at the last page where it says certification, that's only to be executed at loan closing. Only to be executed at loan closing. So I'll go ahead and read it. Resolution of the Township Board of the Tuscora Township, authorizing and providing for the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its sewer facility to serve an area lawfully within its jurisdiction to serve, whereas it is necessary for the Township Tuscora, hereinafter called the Association, to raise a portion of the cost of such undertaking by issuance of its bonds in the principal amount of three million, four hundred, eighty-one thousand and one hundred dollars pursuant to the provisions of Special Assessment, Public Act 188 of 1954, and whereas the Association intends to obtain assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture, herein called the Government, acting under provisions of the Consolidated Farm and Rural Development Act 7 U.S.C. 1921, and the planning, financing, and supervision of such undertaking and the purchasing of bonds lawfully issued in the event that no other acceptable purchaser for such bonds is found by the Association. Now, therefore, in consideration of the promises, the Association hereby resolves to have prepared on its behalf and to adopt an ordinance or resolution for the issuance of its bonds containing such items in such form as required by state statutes and as agreeable and acceptable to the government, to refinance the unpaid balance in whole or in part of its bonds upon the request of the government, if at any time it shall appear to the government. The Association is able to refinance its bonds by obtaining a loan for such persons from a responsible cooperative or private sources at more reasonable rates and terms for loans for similar purposes and periods of time, as required by Section 333(c) of the said Consolidated Farm and Rural Development Act 7 U.S.C. 1983, paragraph C. Number three, to provide for, execute, and comply with the Form RD 400-4 Assurance Agreement and Form RD 400-1 Equal Opportunity Agreement, including an equal opportunity clause, which clauses to be incorporated in or attached as a rider to each construction contract and subcontract involving in excess of ten thousand dollars. Number four, to identify the government... Indemnify the government for any payments made or losses suffered by the government. On behalf of the Association, such indemnification shall be payable from the same source of funds pledged to pay the bond or any other legal... Legally permissible source. Number five, that upon a default in the payments of any principal and incurred interest on the bonds or in the performance of any covenant or agreement contained herein in the instruments indicated... Incident to making or insuring the loan, the government at its option may declare the entire principal amount then outstanding and incurred interest immediately due and payable be for the account of the Association payable from the source of funds pledged to pay the bonds or any other legally permissible source, incur and pay reasonable expenses for repair, maintenance, operation of the facility, and such other reasonable expenses as may be necessary to cure the cause of default, and/or C, take possession of the facility, repair, maintain, and operate or rent it. Default under provisions of this resolution or any instrument incident at the making or insuring of the loan may be construed by the government to constitute default under any other instrument held by the government and to execute or assume by the Association. And default under such instrument may be construed by the government to constitute default hereunder. Six, not to sell, transfer, lease, or otherwise encumber the facility, or any portion thereof, or interest therein, or to permit others to do so without the prior written consent of the government. Not to defuse the bonds or to borrow money, enter into any contract or agreement, or otherwise incur any liabilities for any purpose in connection with the facility, exclusive normal maintenance, without prior written consent of the government if such undertaking would involve the source of funds pledged to pay the bonds. Eight, to place the proceeds of the bonds on deposit in an account and in a matter approved by the government. Funds may be deposited in an institution insured by state or federal government or invested in readily marketable securities backed by the full faith and credit of the United States. Any income from these accounts will be considered as revenue of the system. Nine, to comply with the applicable state and federal laws and regulations and to continually operate and maintain the facility in good condition. Ten, to provide for the receipt of adequate revenues to meet the requirements of debt service operations and maintenance and the establishment of adequate reserves. Revenue accumulated over and above the need to pay operating and maintenance. Debt service and reserves may be retained or used to make prepayments on the loan. Revenue cannot be used to pay any expenses which are not directly incurred for the facility financed by USDA. No free service or use of the facility will be permitted. Eleven, to acquire and maintain such insurance of the bond coverage as may be required by the government. Going through that now, by the way. Twelve, to establish and maintain such books and records relating to the operation of the facility and its financial affairs and to provide for required audit thereof as required by the government, to provide the government a copy of each audit without its request, and to forward to the government such additional information and reports as it may, from time to time, required. To provide the government, at all reasonable times, access all books and records relating to the facility and access to the property of the system, so that the government may acquire that the Association is complying with the provisions hereof and of instruments incident to the making or insuring of the loan. Fourteen, that if the government requires that a reserve account be established, dispartments from that account may be used when necessary for payments due on the bond, if sufficient funds are not otherwise available and prior approval the government has obtained. Also, with the prior written approval of the government, funds may be withdrawn and used for such things as emergency maintenance, extensions to facilities, and replacement of short-lived assets. Thirteen, fifteen, right. To provide adequate services to all persons within the service area who can feasibly and legally be served, and to obtain USDA's concurrence prior to refusing new or adequate services to such persons. Upon failure to provide services which are feasible and legal, such persons shall have a direct right of action against the Association or public body. Sixteen, to comply with the measures identified in the government's environmental impact analysis for this facility for the purpose of avoiding and reducing the adverse environmental impacts of the facility's construction or operation. To accept... Seventeen, to accept a grant in and the amount not to exceed two million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars under the terms offered by the government, that the township supervisor and township clerk of the Association are hereby authorized and empowered to take all necessary actions or appropriate in the execution of all written instruments as may be required in regards to... Or as evidence of such grant, and to operate the facility under the terms offered in said grant agreement. The provisions hereof and the provisions of all instruments incident to that making of the insuring of the loan, unless otherwise specifically provided by the terms of such instrument, shall be binding upon the Association as long as the bonds are held or insured by the government or signee. The provisions of Section 6 through 17 hereof may be provided for in more specific detail in the bond resolution or ordinance. To the extent that the provisions contained in such bond resolution or ordinance should be found to be inconsistent with the provisions hereof, these provisions shall be construed as controlling between the Association and the government per signee.
Very good, Bob.
I'm sorry it took so long. Is there any discussion on this?
We need a motion first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I make the move to approve the loan resolution for issuance of three million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in bonds and approval to accept a grant of two million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Oh, Jan, you go right ahead. Right ahead. Jan did that. Go ahead.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Roll call. Janet Vance.
Yes.
Bob Kramer. Jan Delhae.
Yes.
And Kim Pearson.
Yes.
And Jay Rees-Meier, yes.
Okay. Our next item, and the motion is declared adopted. Our next order of business, I'll turn this over to Jay.
Yeah, this is just related to the Enterprise Fund. We have three items here that would need to go into the Enterprise Fund. I'll make a motion in a minute in that regard. We pulled them out of bills so that we could discuss this and agree to this as a board. And I think there's a fourth item in there that does not go to the Enterprise Fund.
That was a sewer maintenance bill.
Yeah, sewer maintenance bill for about three hundred and nine dollars. So I want to run through real quickly what the total is here. So we have a sewer maintenance bill for three hundred and nine dollars. We have three other bills, one from Mead Hunt for eighty dollars, and two from our attorney for a hundred and sixty dollars each. So the total cost of those going into the Enterprise Fund would be four hundred dollars, and the other bill for three hundred and nine dollars due to maintenance on the sewer system. So I'd like to make a motion to pay these bills and to move... And to transfer four hundred dollars from the general fund balance to the Enterprise Fund for Phase One and Two sewer-related costs, which are, what I just mentioned, the attorney fees and the Mead Hunt fee for payment.
I'll second. Discussion. Folks, we track all these bills. Folks, we track all these bills. They're on our server, and every single bill in regards to Phase One and Phase Two is tracked and copied, and at loan closing, we turn these in, correct, for immediate repayment.
Jay, I have a question. On our Enterprise Fund transaction sheet, this is $560. Is $160 more than what you requested?
Well, we had to try and pull these bills together. We went through them two or three times and found out that the bills are $160, $160, and $80, so that's...
That's $560, then.
That's just $400.
Okay.
$160, $160 is 320 plus $80 is $400.
Yeah, $400, okay.
My, our mistake. You know, again, they got tied into the payables, the bills, and they really needed to come out of that so we could agree as a board to pull them out of the general fund and then to put it against the Enterprise Fund where it can be repaid to the township, assuming we approve all of them, the sewer-related.
Right, so we changed this from $560 to $400.
Correct.
Okay.
Plus $309 for the other maintenance bill. Again, trying to get these out the door because tomorrow we do checks.
Right, okay.
I am waiting on the auditor to weigh in on the physical bank account that we opened called Tuscoro Township Sewer Phase One and Two. There's some concern that that may be an issue at some point with the single audit and being able to, especially under the terms of this loan, that it's very restrictive about these dollars for only this phase and these dollars for only this phase, to be able to do that. So we're waiting for him to weigh in. The last time I checked, I had not heard back from Andrew, unless I missed it. No, I did not. Okay, thanks, Chris.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. I'm pleased to announce that we have a represent, two representatives from the Department of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. They're going to give us a presentation. It's Pete Palace and Al Janutolo, I hope I said that correct, and they are local residents of Tuscoro Township, and they're representing DOD, so I'd like to invite them to the podium and speak.
Thank you.
Welcome, Pete.
Thank you, Bob. Which way shall we stand?
Anywhere you want.
Should we face the audience? I'm going to turn around, Al, and face the audience.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Al Janutolo, and I hope everyone has had a wonderful day in this beautiful Michigan sunshine.
Before we start this morning, this evening, Al, the Department of Defense wants to award Tuscoro Township a statement of support. Tuscoro Township recognizes the Guard and Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our local communities.
Thank you.
We're up, Al. We're here to do a couple of things, and I'll try to make this as brief as we can because I know it's running over a little bit. Why is it that we, we're from what they call E S G R, and it's called Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve? And we have a couple of things that we do to enhance the relationship between the employees of the Guard and Reserve and the regular employer. Our main mission is to gain and maintain active support from all public and private employers for the men and women of the Guard and Reserve. And our purpose is to ensure employers that they understand their rights when they hire the Guard and Reserve, and also for their important role in our national defense. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the Guard and Reserve takes care of about half of the fighting force that we have here in America. So, and they are constantly being shipped here and shipped there, and so thusly we sometimes have to intercede with the employees. The other thing that they are governed by is the employer is the Uniformed Services Reemployment Act, and that was produced probably in about, I think, 1955. And so what it does, it sets out an agenda for the employee. And thusly, when they, when we have the employer, employee relationship going well, everything is good, but sometimes there are misunderstandings, and we have Pete. He is our ombudsman for the state of Michigan, so we have that. For the employer, we advocate for the Guard and Reserve members to hire them and to make sure everything goes well, and we educate the employer in his rights, what he should be aware of. Like when the guardsmen, they go two weeks, or two days a month, really, and then they go for two weeks a year. And when they do this, they have to give a verbal or a written statement to them so that they are in good standing with the employer, because number one, the employer's there to make money, and so he has to have, and we try to give them timely notice when everyone goes on to their leave. And as everyone knows, the Guard and Reserve are really getting called up a lot, and I think there's something like 30,000 right now that's on active duty for maybe up to a year. We also have the governor, whomever it might be, he or she can call out the troops, and they're also protected. If they're called out federally by the president, they can go ahead and just, they're covered by this, what they call the Unemployment Rights Act. But if you go by the state, it's Public Act 133, which allows the state to, it's the same thing as what would, like the Civil Rights Act of 64 would be. So we partner with the state and the federal agencies to enhance the employment and opportunities of the Guard and Reserve. We have an employer outreach to educate those employers that might have some kind of, maybe a misconception or a misunderstanding when they do hire the guard and military. Then we also have a program that's called the Military Outreach. Once a year, we must go to each unit in the state, and Pete and I handles everything from, say, like, west branch, north from lake to lake. So we have quite a large area. But what we do, we go and make sure that they know their, what they're supposed to do for the employer, when, make sure he gets timely notice of when that two-day-a-month program starts, or when they're actually, if they get deployed, and also for their two weeks a year. We have the ombudsman service, which Pete handles, and he gets some complaints or misunderstandings. And when that employee calls and says, hey, maybe I've been discriminated against, or my boss doesn't want to give me the time off, which they are required by law, all they have to do is say, hey, I'm going to guard on a certain date. That's all they have to do, and they're covered. And it can go through steps. It goes through Pete, and it can also go as high as the Department of Labor and the Justice Department to see if there's any. But most of the time, it's just a misunderstanding between the employer and the employee. So, and then we also recognize and honor the bosses that have been good to the Guard and Reserve. We have boss lifts down in Detroit at Selfridge Air Force Base. Sometimes they'll go up in a KC-135, or now I think they're going to do something with the CA's 47 Chinooks, or the, maybe the Blackhawks even, so they're going to do that. Then they have, you can go and observe what's going on. We have the Coast Guard over in Grand Haven. You can go over there. We're going to have another, hopefully this year, an icebreaker cruise, and it's two days. It's a day, a morning and an afternoon. So what they do, they go underneath, they take them out, they give an indoctrination briefing, and take them out underneath the bridge and break some ice, but there wasn't very much this year, so we didn't have very much to go with. And just to sum this up, for hiring and retaining veterans, their experience related to world events, military employees know every second counts. Military employees have a professional image. They know how to get a job done and do it on time, and they have a high degree of integrity. And just, a lot of people don't know, but only about 20% of the people that come into the Guard can be hired that apply to going to the Guard or to the Reserve component. There's an intelligence level, educational level, criminal history, past drug use, and also medical fitness. They all have to meet all these things. So these are just a few of the things that we would like to bring to your attention, and like I said, I didn't want to keep you very long. And the biggest thing is the training that it's always pulled from the employer, that two days a month and two weeks a year, without counting on being called up by the governor or some other thing for the federal government. So I'd like to thank the board for having us, and I hope that this might enlighten you just a little bit on what the Guard and Reserve do.
I'd like to share, Al, in case I worked recently, is that okay?
Sure.
Employer and service member live in Duluth, Minnesota. The employee is electrician. The employer, she has two electricians that work for her. One of them's a Michigan Army Guard, Duluth, and his military duty station is in Traverse City. So he has to travel from Duluth all the way to Traverse City to do his weekend drill, and it's two weeks in the summer. So I get a call, I talk to the employer in Duluth, and she says to me, oh, why can't he be in the Minnesota National Guard? Or why can't he be in the Wisconsin National Guard? Why is he in the Michigan National Guard? And I said to her, well, ma'am, he has a very special military MOS?
MOS specialty.
MOS specialty, that's not used at all in Minnesota, and not used at all in Wisconsin, only used in the Michigan Army Guard. And by the way, he's got 18 years in the Guard, close to retiring, so could you work with us on this issue? She says to me, of course, I had no idea how essential he is to the Michigan Army Guard. And we worked it out, you know, it's a misunderstanding. He never shared with his boss the details of what his duty was, okay? He should have, right, Al?
Right on.
So, Al, why don't you do your closing?
And so the core objective is to, with the employer, is to get this camaraderie so that everyone is on the same page. They know what the U.S.A.R.A. or the Uniformed Services Reemployment Rights Act is. That's the main thing. And then to get the guard member, they can make sure that he gives ample notice to the employer. So that is where the misunderstandings come in. But I've been with him for about seven years now. Pete's like 20, and we have a large area that we have to cover, and just to make sure that, because a lot of times, even with the single guys, we even have brochures that we put out to them, even how to take care of their cat or their dog when they go, when they're being brought at, you know, to the federal level. And because they might be gone for a year, how to do their banking, who's supposed to do that, what limitations do they have?
Pay or rent.
And, yeah, but you have to go through all of this, especially during pre-deployments. And then when they come back, we have a post-deployment, and it's called a yellow ribbon ceremony, and then we go through all again to make sure that they've made contact with the employers. So it's a lot of, a lot of effort to get everybody on the same page. But thank you very much for having us today.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any employers in the audience here? Employers in the audience?
Behind you. One of our best employees is a guard guy, and he left us.
He left?
Yeah, he was in Poland for over a year.
Wow. Anybody else? Any other employers?
Okay, while they're passing these out, we'll go to the next. Thank you, Pete.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Jan, I'll let you go. We're going to talk about airport leases.
So the issue we have at hand is that we're looking to discuss the transfer of Mr. Kinsfatter's hangar lease. Just a few of the high points. November 2014, that lease was entered into with the township. It's $252 a year, with a $5 increase every five years, and the term of the lease is 25 years. So I asked to pull it out of the consent agenda because I did not understand that these leases were assignable this way. My hope was that as leases changed hands, that we would have an opportunity to find a more equitable lease structure, both for current hangar owners like Mr. Lempion, who have stepped up, and for the township. So I know you're looking to approve it, and I'm, I think it, I think we need to have, I mean, I understand that we had the attorney weigh in on it, but I'm hoping that there is something else that we can do. Is the, is the person assuming the lease related to Mr. Kinsfatter?
No.
No?
No.
I'm sorry?
I didn't understand that, so I wanted clarification. I didn't hear.
My understanding from the airport managers...
Do you need me to come up?
Oh, there you are, good.
So, no, we're selling the hangar because Chris had passed away in February, and so...
Sorry for your loss.
Thank you. And so the new purchaser would, of course, need to have the reassignment of the lease, and all of, he went to the meeting on Saturday and met all of the EAA guys, and they're very excited for this to go through as well, because then there's young blood in the airport. So, and that may be contingent upon, you know, getting the reassignment of the lease to 2039.
You said the purchase is contingent on assigning the lease?
Yes.
You got a microphone over there?
No.
He's giving it away.
I'm going to ask, with the board's approval, ask the deputy supervisor to weigh in because of his real estate background, and I've had him involved with the attorney from the beginning. So, Ron, maybe you can tell us what the attorney said and what your thoughts are.
So, first off, Chris had been very helpful to me in interpreting some of this stuff. He had responded to some of our questions. He had stepped up even recently, which was very far along his path, as you all know.
He actually helped us write the, write the new policy for the airport.
He did, he did, and he weighed in on Mr. Lempion's lease. So I preface all that. So you... So I preface all that, so please don't take any of this personally, it's not how it's meant. But in 2014, there was a completely different economic climate than exists today. And when the other hangar owners came to us, all of the hangar owners who've come to us as their leases came up, and they recognized the need for renegotiation. So from a real estate standpoint, and, you know, I'm no attorney, we have spoken to our attorney on this, and I don't speak for the board, but I think the board would agree with me, I think what we would like to see here is the new owner approach us and execute a new lease. Because, you know, $252 a year in 2014 dollars with $5 a year in increase, you know, Mr. Lepin came to us and he offered the 50% increase at the extent, at the end of his lease.
The increase is $5 after five years?
Right.
Not five, it's not $5 a year?
Correct, correct. The most recent lease that we renewed, it increased 50%. So, you know, we did a bit of a market study, albeit an informal one, about what hangar rates are and what they should be in other area airports. So again, I think that the right thing to do here for everyone, both the new assigning, new hangar owner, and in the best interest of the township, is to just make a new application and execute a new lease. And I'll be honest with you, the biggest single item that's in there is the cost of living escalation clause. And that's what's in Mr. Lepin's lease, and that was the board's intention going forward, that any new lease would include a cost of living escalation clause. So that's all I really have to contribute for.
I'd like to move that we approve the lease under the following conditions. Annual lease is raised $5 annually per year effective immediately, with another raise in November 2024, $5 annually, with the township attorney preparing the assignment, and legal and transfer costs to be paid by the new leasing. Is there a second? Motion fails, no second.
I'd like to make a motion that we have the prospective owner of this property come forward, and so we can negotiate a new lease with them in conjunction with, make it consistent with possibly Mr. Lepin's lease.
Would you like to name the negotiator for the lease?
No, that would maybe be a different motion.
Okay, I'll support that. Have they had a reassignment of lease in the past, like since 2014? I know, I don't think anyone has changed over.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to mention one thing, that when you're looking at inflation around 3%, your cost doubled every 25 years. In other words, what was the cost to run the airport 25 years ago is now double what it was then today. Now, the hangar owners want to have a 25-year lease, I understand that, that's, along with that comes the township half of it as well, where we have to cover the costs. So that's, there's a give and take there on that 25-year. If you want 25 years, we've got to have the cost of living with it.
But they also included all of the volunteer hours of all of the owners of the hangars, which would have cost the township a lot more money if the guys didn't do all the mowing and all of the plowing and...
That certainly helps, but again, we've spent more money on the airport than they've actually put into in terms of hours of labor over five years.
And we took that into consideration with John Lepin's lease.
Yeah, he provides a lot of that equipment.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, with all fairness coming down the road, I think that Mr. Lepin would be upset if we gave a break on this.
But he gets it.
But it is a reassignment versus, because it's not up yet, since, it wouldn't be until
Any more discussion? Let's have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am opposed. It passes, anything else?
Four to one.
Four to one, any other, anything else? Motion to assign someone to negotiate. Who wants to volunteer if they will negotiate?
I do have a question, oh, about it? Is it time to ask if I do have one?
How are you?
Hi, I'm Betty Fiedewa Bedard, and I'm just helping them with the paperwork, I'm a real estate broker in Michigan. But I just have a question then, if, according to the language in the lease, it has to have approval from your township to have an assignment of lease, otherwise it'll just stay the same, If we just keep the owners the same?
Yes, yes, if that, if that owner stays in that hangar, then yes.
Okay, and then, so then the other option would be to have an approval from you to sublease it, that'd be correct, according to the language? If that would be our alternative?
I don't know, talking to the attorney now.
I know that some of the leases have a, have a clause that allows them to sublet it, but not to make money on the sublet. Obviously, the current lesser would still be responsible for the taxes and other costs.
So it's, do you need a copy, do you want a copy of it?
I have.
Oh, okay, okay.
We all have.
Two things, two things I was told in my business law class, the most dangerous people on the, in the world are attorneys with calculators and accountants with law books. So I tried very carefully interpreting contracts.
Okay, it's just item number two where it says assignment, that this lease may be assigned, sublet, or sold by the leasing with 30 days prior notice and writing to the Tuscaraw Township Board and subject to the approval of the said board. And so if it's not approved to be assigned, then it sounds like it could be then sublet.
With more approval?
Yeah. Right. So that would be our option, if we just keep it the same and then sublease it? I'm just trying to clarify.
It's legal advice.
The options.
That's kind of legal advice.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to check with the attorney on that, because we're not lawyers, so we don't know for sure.
Otherwise, you've made a motion to approve the assignment of lease with the changes in the terms, though, is what you're trying to, right now.
Just to negotiate those terms, yes.
Okay, okay. Do you want to go ahead with that then? Well, we do have the, at all parties here right now, too, in the audience, so that's what I was going to ask.
I don't think we're in a position to negotiate tonight.
No, that's okay, I know what your terms are that you already mentioned, so.
Ma'am, I would prefer that whatever's negotiated be run through our attorney, so...
Okay, go ahead and proceed with your original plan, and then we'll just, you can negotiate with Mary.
Is there a motion?
Once you talk to the attorney about it.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a motion?
We don't have, we already have a motion to have...
Right, but do we want to assign somebody to?
To negotiate?
Yeah. Any suggestions?
My suggestion would be to get them a copy of Mr. Lepin's lease and start from there, and then have him come back to the next board meeting with a proposal.
I'd like to see somebody assigned to represent the board.
I would like to make a motion that we assign Ron on that position.
How do I know?
How do you know?
Okay, thank you. Just so we know who is going to be assigned, then, okay.
Well, we got to vote first.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am, he'll give you his card after. Ma'am, he'll give you his business card after, after the meeting. All right, we're done with the business public comments, please. Any public, yes, ma'am.
Beth Henderson, Ron, I got two messages about two meetings, and then nothing else.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I just wanted...
Thank you.
I want that working.
While you're up there, can you go back for just one second?
Can I?
Yes, please. I would like to thank you for stepping up.
And congratulate you.
And congratulate you.
Beth Henderson is going to be Parks Commissioner until the end of the term in November. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, Beth, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Patrick McGinnis. I would like to quote Morgan Freeman, who said, "When you are dead, you don't know you're dead. That pain is felt by others. The same thing happens when you're stupid." It was just over one year ago, May 11th, 2023, that Bob Kramer and Janet Vance launched their plans to have me prohibited from filming township meetings and hopefully have me arrested and thrown in jail. After that meeting, three members of the township board went to the police and filed a complaint against me. What they did not know at the time is that the police were filming their statements, and what they also did not know was at the end of the township meeting, I continued to film the events happening in the meeting room. When you compare the video from the police and my video of the events after the meeting, it is very clear that Bob Kramer and Janet Vance were clearly lying to the police. Later, when Bob Kramer became the newly appointed supervisor, he directed the police to file charges against me. In the end, the court dismissed the case, no fines, no probation, no community service. That is what dismissed means. Bob also tried to get a letter-writing campaign against me by asking friends and relatives to send complaints about me to the prosecuting attorney, still trying to get me arrested. That also failed. Then Bob sent members of what I call Bob's Goon Squad out to try to provoke me so that the Goon Squad could react and claim that I was the cause of the disturbance. At one meeting, members of the township meeting had to step between my wife and I and two members of the Goon Squad. These community members did this because they were concerned that Jake and I could be harmed. What Bob did not know was earlier that day, I filed a notice of concern with the police that I heard rumors that I would be attacked during that evening's meeting. While the attack was happening, Bob Kramer can be seen quickly leaving the table, and as he passed Kim Pearson, he can be heard on tape telling Kim that I was going to jail. I did not go to jail. Now that this board has challengers, Bob, Janet, and Kim had pulled their papers to run for reelection. I expect during board comments, Bob will tell more lies about why he is not running for reelection. I ask you to remember that whatever reason he states for not running were already there when he filed papers to run for a new term. In closing, I'd like to quote another entertainer, Kenny Rogers, "You have to know when to hold them, and you have to know when to fold them." Thank you for your time.
Public comment, please.
I'd just like to talk about a few dates, if I could.
Yeah, turn your mic on.
First off, two thank yous, one, yes, Beth, thank you very much for stepping up for the parks vacancy. My other thank you is for Doug Schofield from the, our maintenance department for handling the signage at Marina Park. As you may or may not know, the Parks Commission passed an increase from $6 for a daily permit and $40 for an annual permit to $9 daily and $49 annual. That did take effect when it was passed, however, the signage didn't reflect it, so we weren't able to enforce it, didn't try to enforce it. There's new signage up now, it does reflect the proper rates, there was a conflict with the old paper signage in the display case, that's been corrected. So as of Friday, the new rate's enforceable at Marina Park for lunch, it's $9 daily, $49 annual. On April 27th, the Indian River Kiwanis, in cooperation with Joy Fellowship Food Pantry and the Food Bank of Eastern Michigan, had a food drive at the Inland Lake Schools. It was our biggest ever, we serviced 68 cars, 148 households, 525 people served, of which 151 were children. Without getting into the social commentary, it's telling, we've been doing these food drives, we started helping with the Onaway ones and with the Onaway churches back during COVID, and saw the need in the community, we started doing them here locally. The next one locally will be June 1st in Sheboygan, the city of Sheboygan is holding a Community Action Day. Food Bank of Eastern Michigan will be providing a food truck, and our local Kiwanis will be handling the distribution. The next local one is August 3rd at the high school in the North Atlantic Lot, and the final one for the year will be Saturday, October 26th. So all of you that came out to help, thank you, we always need volunteers, and the need in the community is great, it's so great that Sheboygan County is listed as the most underserved in the state as far as food distribution, and as such, the transportation fees for those foods, which are normally, the food's always provided free, the transportation fees are between $1,200 and $1,500 per truckload. Those fees have been waived for us in Sheboygan County since inception, as far as we know, they will continue to be waived for the rest of this year because the food need up here is so great, so, thank you.
Board comments?
Yeah, I've got one. Mr. McGinnis is right about me pulling my paperwork to run, I have served for eight years this year, I have worked tirelessly on the sewer committee to try and get this thing through, among other things like the light grant things and that kind of stuff. And my father recently passed away, excuse me, April 5th, so I'm dealing with a lot of those issues with paperwork and insurances and all the things that go with that. And it's a little overwhelming sometimes, get put on hold for two, three hours at a time sometimes when you're dealing with these companies. And I'm also the primary caregiver for my mother, who's 93 years old. I've given the township a lot, I love this township, I love the people in this township, but I have to focus on my family right now. My husband and I are the only ones taking care of my mom and her house, and her house too, and it's a lot, and I'm a little overwhelmed at this time. So after my father died, I had to reprioritize, and that's when I decided to pull my paperwork, had nothing to do with Mr. McGinnis or his accusations or threats, it had everything to do with I have to focus on my family, and that's why I pulled my paperwork. And I waited till the last minute to do that because I was hoping I could work things through, but there's a lot that I'm dealing with right now, and so I thought it was best to focus on my family, and that's where I'm at, so, thank you. And, oh, by the way, thank you, Beth, for stepping up for parks, and also helping with the food distribution, too, I appreciate that, thank you.
More comments, any?
I think it's very interesting that both Ron and Janet have stolen half of the comments I was going to leave tonight, so I won't repeat them. So the only thing I have left is the comment about the grass seed. So because of the fiscal year end, we buy grass seed in the spring that we use throughout the calendar year, and it overlaps. And I suppose if you wanted to go by strict gap, you would inventory the grass seed at the end of the year and only expense in the current year what was appropriate, what was actually used. The other part of that is that I know with my own company, we get a significant discount if we order that in early spring, and we order a lot. And in addition to that, in the last three years, grass seed is treated like cash. So you want grass seed, you've got to go check it out, you've got to get permission from the Fert Manager, and he doles it out in five-pound allotments. So that big bag, and I'm guessing that $2,000, it's about eight bags, doesn't get wasted. If you take, and I'm not sure if this is well beyond what we would normally use, but if you take a walk around this building and figure out how much topsoil we're going to need to fill in along the building, especially on that end where the drainage is poor, which has contributed to the problem, which is only, you know, going to get fixed with this $200,000 has contributed to the problem, which is only, you know, going to get fixed with this $200,000 grant, I, I, I think that the Parks people are doing their best to supervise Doug. I think Doug has been very judicious in his use of township funds, and so it may be that the expense is extraordinary this year. I used to know exactly what a bag of grass seed costs. I couldn't tell you this year.
It's doubled.
But that sounds about right. It's, and it's, and it's doubled in the last three years in addition to that, so I, I can do some more investigation on that if you'd like, but even though it's over our budget, at that level didn't really get my attention because I know that grass seed has become crazy expensive.
Jay?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
Except good night.
Real quick, I know I want to get out of here. Want to let the board know that the airport harvest is almost done. We just have to, they're going to get out there and rake. We netted about, Chris, 28?
$28,000.
$28,000 that we can use. That paid for $16,000 in very needed repairs to the runway. I really appreciate our forester. He's a certified forester from the DNR. Both he and our local forester said that forest was dying and needed to be cut to be rejuvenated, and they, they kept their word and kept every tree that was under, I believe, five inches in diameter. So in five years, we're going to have a new forest, and I'll tell you what, a gentleman out at the airport told me, two gentlemen told me, trees and airplanes don't go together, especially at an airport. I also want to thank all the community members that planted the flowers. They're absolutely gorgeous, and I hope you get a chance to see them. We're going to try and plant another 2,000 in the fall, so if you want to join us and you want to have an input on where to put them, we'd love to hear from you. Most of all, I just want to really thank Janet Vance for helping me and Chris to getting through where we are today on this sewer thing. This is a really big deal. The largest public works project in the history of this township. The biggest one, the next biggest one was in 1870 for $10 million when they rerouted the Sturgeon River, which used to run right behind your house.
I used to live on the Sturgeon.
You used to live on the Sturgeon, if you'd been alive in 1869. So, but it's been a long, hard road. We've got a long ways to go, and I just want to tell all the residents, when they start tearing up the town, if we get that far, I'm confident that we will, but if and when we get that far, there's going to be inconvenience, there's going to be traffic, there's going to be mud. We'll work through it. Let's be nice to one another. If you have a problem, we're going to have people from performance engineering do nothing but liaise with customers as well as the people up here. So I want to thank you all for coming. Motion to dismiss?
Yes, sir. Just want to thank all the volunteers that helped with the elections. Chris was in the room here, and Vicki back there. Did I miss anybody? There's about 10, 13, yeah, 10, 10 volunteers plus two receiving board volunteers, so 12 people really made a big difference to help us do a consolidated school election. So I thank the people that are here, and all the people that, you know, couldn't make it here, did a great job.
Thanks, Jay.
Yep. Motion to dismiss?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're dismissed. Thank you.